Welcome to this edition of the Minot Matters podcast where we are beginning our coverage of the 2024 election cycle for Minot where we there's the city council going on and other elections today. We get a focus on the city councils. We're joined by candidate Leif Snyder. Thank you for joining us today.
Glad to be here.
Absolutely. So let's let's dive into this mess. There's a lot of you guys.
Yeah, three spots open, seven candidates. It that's a full a full ballot.
That's yeah, that's a big roster right there. It's gonna be interesting to see how it plays out, but let's talk about you for a minute. Who are you? What's your background? How did we get to this point?
I was born and raised here, the son of two teachers. I guess some of the best advice I ever got was from my father who served on city council and session down in Bismarck was that if you don't like the way decisions are being made, voice your opinion, keep an eye on things. Otherwise, people will make decisions and maybe not care how you want them made.
Right. So so you live in Minot, obviously?
Yes, I do. I left twice to come back, like many of your guests, I'm finding out.
Yeah. What's up with that? What brought you back?
I took a job I really didn't like, to put it bluntly. I left school early. It was either pay for insulin or pay for books. Okay, so I took a fairly decent paying job and I learned the corporate world can be somewhat cruel. Yes, the boss was, well, life sometimes in sales, you just have to screw people. And that didn't sit well with me. So I returned and then I got into coaching. I coached hockey for what 17 years. Wow. The second time I left mine out was actually to go to Williston and I the first year that girls high school hockey was a thing. I coached the Williston program there.
Wow.
Returned back here, took different jobs so I could continue to coach and eventually I started the Minot State Women's Program.
So you're a little bit of a trailblazer?
Maybe, yeah, you could say that. When I see people being wronged, I try and help out. And long story short is the girls wanted to start an MSU team. They were told that would happen. And then the person in charge at that time really didn't fall through. I contacted the ACHA and found out they were basically being used to work the men's games.
And so I've heard you say that you're a little bit of a watchdog, or some people might classify you as that. So this is kind of that being showcased a little bit.
Yeah, I would say so. I've always been an engaged citizen.
Right?
To me, it's disappointing that a city council meeting, you can watch them being streamed or show up in person. And there's always more staff there than there are citizens.
Why is that?
I think North Dakota nice maybe gets us in trouble. Sometimes we assume that people always have our best interest in mind. And maybe their best interest isn't the same as yours.
Isn't property tax in the best interest of everybody?
Well, one would think so, but maybe it isn't always. I'm kind of a details guy. Now, I probably have more time to look into things than other people and visually impaired, I'm not employed.
So talk about that for a minute.
Okay, I'm a type one diabetic and diabetic retinopathy is a common condition with some diabetics. It's basically a condition where your eyes bleed from the inside.
Okay.
Anyplace else in your body, new blood vessel growth is good.
Yeah.
In your eyes, it's not good for your retina.
Okay.
So I have my right eye is actually filled with silicone and I actually have a buckle. It's it's a form of a belt around your eyeball.
Wow.
I've had three different vitrectomies, countless other procedures, PRP laser, all kinds of stuff. I've had a lot of eye work, put it that way. And basically, a lot of people wonder, well, how can you do what you do? I'm totally blind in the right eye.
Right.
And I have what's referred to as fovea vision in the left. So most people, if they, you know, see their hands or peripheral vision probably about here.
Right.
I can't see my hands until right there.
That's incredible.
So it's like looking through a tube.
Right. That's incredible.
So I probably have more time than most. So a lot of city issues, I look into the details.
Yeah. So so like, obviously, like accessibility and all that has become a big deal in the last couple of years, really. Well, it depends on what part of accessibility. If you're talking about wheelchair ramps and stores and stuff like that, and sidewalks and stuff, it's been around for a lot longer. I come from a digital marketing background. And we've seen things ramping up extreme and extreme amounts in the last few years with accessibility for websites and things like that. Do you use some of those tools when you're browsing the web and stuff like that?
Fortunately, this my version of disability, I have a fairly large computer screen. I have some e-readers that help me. Right. But for the most part, I don't need other other assistance.
That's good. That's good.
Reading paper documents with e-readers is is quite easy.
Right.
The city packets that come out, like I continually ask people or suggest that don't just go to the meeting, but read the PDFs on the agenda. That's where the decisions are made.
Yeah.
That's where all the extra information is.
Right.
So that shouldn't be a problem at all.
Absolutely. Interesting. So there's a lot of topics. Of course, there was the city council debate or forum, whatever is officially classified as that was put on by the Minot Chamber EDC recently. What were your thoughts on that? Give it a grade. How did it go?
It was interesting. I'm glad it didn't get wet when the ceiling was leaking. Most people don't know that happened, but.
Unbelievable.
Well, sixteen million dollars and it was an air conditioner. Something was was off. I don't know. But.
If you were voted to the city council, would you get that fixed?
Well, I think, yeah, that obviously has to be fixed. You can't have a leaky ceiling in, you know, city council chambers.
Yeah.
Unless, hey, we have to crimp and save. Maybe maybe that's an issue.
Yeah, absolutely. But overall, what would be a grade for it?
Now, keep in mind, I'm not doing this to make friends or appease people. I'm the citizen. I'm gonna say what needs to be said. I've always been that type. If people don't want to vote for me, that that's fine. But I'm gonna bring up topics that I think need to be addressed and talked about. So overall, I don't. Are you talking giving myself a grade?
Just overall, the whole the whole that do you feel like the questions were fair, things like that?
I think the questions are fair, but keep in mind, it was put on by the Chamber EDC. And I fully admit, I'm not the biggest fan of the Chamber EDC.
Okay.
That's a membership organization. That's not a they have a contract with the city to do economic development, but they cater to their members.
Right. Yeah. And it seems like a word that was mentioned a lot during the forum was the word growth. And I think you love that word. I think I think you're from what it sound like is you just are real big fan of expanding Minot and everything.
I wouldn't say that. No, I like your sarcasm. I'm a big fan of sarcasm. I think growth should be what it is. I don't think it's the government's role at all to inspire growth. Growth benefits certain people in town. I'll admit that.
Right.
But, you know, I've talked to all the grandparents I ran into who now have to leave town. They're moving away from their grandkids because they can't afford to live in the home that they own.
Okay.
So how does growth help them?
Right. And so to bring a more serious tone, property taxes, we've already mentioned it loosely, but let's talk about it. Okay. This was something that seemed like a lot of the candidates had top of mind was it has to be addressed. And there were at least one that didn't view it the same way. What needs to happen for either property taxes to be removed as has been proposed? And it'd be interesting to see what your your view is on that or or for it to be remedied so that it's a little bit more fair to Minot going forward?
Oh, I think fair and equitable is a good point to make. For the most part, I don't think we're crazy about overspending, but we have to be more efficient.
Okay.
There. My coaching background, I can tell you right now, it might not look like an easy way to save money, but we've got to get people on the same page. And I'm talking city staff. There's a huge morale problem. And I'm not trying to throw coaching in here too much, but if everybody is not trying to push the rock up the hill, it's an issue.
Yeah.
That's a problem.
Right.
You know, at the forum, I mentioned some of the things we got some HR issues, morale with some city employees. I want to be as efficient as we can possibly be with city staff to lower the cost as much as we possibly can. Where the cuts gotta be made, I'm not totally sure. I'm looking forward to Monday's budget presentations that all the city department heads are doing. That'll be very interesting. Now, there's also this theory idea about the ballot initiative to get rid of property taxes. But like I said, I'm a details guy. And what is in the details of that ballot initiative? Because I'll be honest, I was out at the All Seasons Arena, like most other people were. Five times I was approached and asked to sign the ballot initiative to abolish property taxes. But is that really what it is? Or is it a ballot initiative to abolish property taxes based on assessed value?
Okay.
Does it leave government entities like the county, the school board, the city to assess property taxes based on the number of windows you have in your house, the number of garage stalls you have?
Alright.
I've dug pretty deep into Becker's proposal and going, I gotta go over it again, but there's there's some questions there. Having said that, now, it's a ballot initiative. And one thing I've learned from Bismarck and what they do down there is, look, this is the will of the people. And if you try and overrule them, that's not gonna go well.
Yeah. Do you think about initiative is the best way to take care of it?
That I don't know. It's the details that matter. So.
What details are you concerned about? Mentioned a couple, but what details specifically?
First of all, the fuzzy math, you know, there are claims that a billion dollars is gonna take care of everything, a billion dollars a year. But it's three versus one. In the video that I saw, does that does that add up? Now, you got the legacy fund. When I looked at it two weeks ago, it looked like nine and a half billion dollars in there. What do we do when that money's gone?
Right. That legacy fund isn't meant to be spent, really.
You know, and then what are we doing? Are we fighting for funding against Fargo and Bismarck? Because Minot's gonna lose almost every time.
Yeah.
So those are the questions that people need to ask.
I mean, just look at the fact that we didn't get the Chick-fil-A, Bismarck and Fargo did. Those are the important things. I think that should be on the list. If you're elected, are you gonna bring Chick-fil-A to mine?
No, no, okay. They can come, but I don't believe in the favoritism. Yeah, no.
Alright, so mentioned a couple of things. One, it was efficient in our budget. How do we become more efficient?
Get the most bang for our buck. Public Works, there are some issues, but we gotta stop the bleeding. The turnover is getting, the police department, the turnover is getting crazy. That's costing us.
Right.
Now, is it costing us millions of dollars? Well, no. But in the long run, it is costing us.
Yeah. So turnover, how do we better engage the employees that we have, the staff that we have? So that way we can reduce that turnover?
Well, first of all, I will be a stickler in saying that city department heads have to follow the law. We can no longer have city department heads protecting another city department head. And I'll mention this as an example. I made a records request. I've been known to make a few. Of all the city department heads, when the last city manager was being accused of the hostile work environment. Well, here's the thing, the hostile work environment still exists. Okay, you cannot then, when the investigative notes are brought out, and it's revealed that there was the airport director who was storing his 30 foot boat on airport property while at the same time negotiating leases and threatening to evict people for having non aviation related items in their hangars, it doesn't look good.
Uh, not really.
You know, and I'm not trying to pick on certain people, but accountability is a two way street. You have to hold people accountable, and that also means rewarding employees who do good. Okay, I think the landfill employees that saved the gentleman's life, it was
Right.
later on in the evening, they were close to closing. He had a medical issue and they were credited with saving his life. That's awesome. That kind of thing needs to happen. I think myself, this was interesting, the old hospital was open. My father was actually in the hospital and I was walking home. It was about eight o'clock in the evening. And my visual impairment, I had a headlamp. So it helps me see. As I'm right by the old Bridgman Creamery on Third Street heading north, there's an individual who's having a conversation with himself and some colorful language and is mentioning my headlamp and turns into how he's gonna kill me.
Yikes.
Okay, so I turn off my headlamp, give him a wide berth. I'm actually out into Third Street now.
Yeah.
As I'm walking by, I think it's over with, turn my headlamp back on, and he keeps going.
Oh, man.
Just try and put some distance in between us. Turn my headlamp off again because he didn't like it. When I get to the base of the Viadoc, and now he's about where the Senex meets the Bridgman Creamery building, I hear one last time, I'm gonna kill you with some exhalations in there. So I turn my headlamp back on and now I can hear him running. I couldn't see him at the time, but I could hear him running in, I think it rained or it was springtime, it was melting. I thought I was gonna get in there, I think, so I pulled out my phone, acted like I was talking to the police. I couldn't multitask enough to do it.
Yeah.
And he stopped.
Wow.
So then I headed back over the Viadoc. He turned around, headed south. But here's the thing, this gentleman, I think he was sentenced to 20 years in prison now for attempted murder.
Wow.
You remember the story about the guy who stole a vehicle down in Wilton? And there was a shooting involved in Third Street there at the railroad tracks. It was the same individual.
Wow.
When I was on the phone with the police after that, I dispatched, put me through to an officer who was closer to me.
Right.
I gave a description, et cetera, et cetera. But her, I can't remember her name, I wish I could. But the officer, their concern was my safety and then the safety of others. She handled it perfectly. That kind of stuff needs to be talked about or recognized more.
Right, right.
Put it that way.
You also mentioned morale in the city staff. And where does that change come from?
I think it starts at the top.
Who's the top, though?
Well, is it the department heads or per se is it HR? I think there's an HR issue.
So you feel like, so when we say top, we're not even going to city manager or mayor?
I don't think the mayor is involved as much as people think. Let's let's remember council and mayor is a part time position. Yep. Very, very part time, actually.
Very part time and pay. There's a lot of duties that's asked of you.
There's a misconception out there that city council makes a lot of bank. And this is probably the worst paying part time job in Minot you can find, really. I mean, fourteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for the amount of work I'm gonna put in if I'm alive.
That's for the year, not for the month. Yeah.
No, you do it to make Minot a better community.
Right.
But yeah, city manager has a role. But here's the thing. He, in theory, is their superior, their supervisor, right? The answer to him. One thing that happened after the dismissal of the previous city manager is that city department heads need, in order to be dismissed from their job, need the city council, the civil service commission, and the city manager all to agree. So there's some areas that I don't know how you change that, but it's almost a position where you can't be fired.
Yeah.
It takes a lot.
Right.
So that accountability comes into play.
So so where does the change in the culture and the morale for the city begin then? HR?
I think it's totally wrong that a city department head making near or at a six figure salary sends a citizen a social media message after a city council meeting, asking you to spar in person in her office. I have a problem with that. I had never met the woman, other than sending an email or two regarding a records request. That has to change. That that cannot be the case.
Mm hmm. Definitely. So so in that came from HR, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Yeah. So just need to you and you feel like that's having an effect on the entire tire? Because you mentioned morale, so I'm trying to get to the bottom of this morale problem.
Treat a citizen that way.
Yeah.
I can't imagine everything that's going on with the employees. And I know quite a few city employees, either present or past, who have contacted me with issues.
So we've been touching around property taxes as well, kind of property taxes, got dug down to those issues. But you mentioned that tax abatement to some makes others have to pony up. Okay? And theory makes sense, but some of the TIFs, a wonderful word. See, I'm a digital background, so TIF is just a picture to me. But at the city, the tax break, it's a tax incentive to somebody that's doing development work and things like that. And there's a certain company that has received two major ones recently, one with the Big M Building downtown, and then another one with the Trax development. So basically, by the way, they're not having to pay the full effect of taxes that we're used to having to pay. But it's also that's revenue that we currently don't have at the city. Correct?
That is correct. Yep.
Okay. So you are, from the point of view, or clarify the point of view that you're from, you don't feel like TIFs should be handed out at all? Or very selective? When should a TIF be in play?
I would be very selective. If it if it entails putting a blighted property, a dilapidated building back on the tax rolls, or along those lines, and maybe, maybe not, but everyone is its own unique situation.
That's fair.
The Big M Building, yeah, it sounded great at first. And I'll keep in mind, originally, it was gonna be two floors of commercial, five floors of residential, including apartments and condos. But now what is it? We've amended it. It's five floors of commercial, two floors of apartments, and I don't think there's any condos in it. So how much housing did we really get incentivized? It's not much. No.
Can I interrupt you for a minute?
Go ahead.
So you are a fan of incentivizing housing development more than you are commercial development?
Yes.
And that be tied back to the perceived or analytical housing shortage in Minot?
Yes, that that's why I would say that.
Okay, sounds good.
Now, if I can continue, my issue with the Trax development, how that works is there is no incentive for housing. There are seven commercial and residential buildings, one being a hotel, proposed, and the Trax or the TIF is on the community space. It's only on that. It includes the media board, the water feature, the ice rink in the winter, and the concert venue.
Yeah.
And how it works is it's assessed as a wheat field. They pay those taxes, wheat field taxes for five years, even if they build a concert venue and everything else. What was so blighted about a wheat field? Why do they get that tax break?
Yeah, but we're not losing any revenue, correct?
Well, wheat field taxes versus taxes going into the general fund for firing police, that's that's losing revenue in my mind. I don't know if you've heard, but the school district's not doing well financially.
Right.
That's money they miss out on. So yeah, I have a problem with that for new construction. And that's not, we hear the theory about infill as well. Well, the last time I was out there, the Trax is basically dang, you're out of town.
Yeah, right. Yeah, it's on the edge. But just to clarify, basically, they're gonna continue paying the amount of taxes that were being paid for that wheat field. They're just not gonna pay the additional amount that they should have to pay based off the new development that goes on it for for until the TIF is up.
Right.
Okay, so the budget doesn't lose money, but you're saying that it does, it doesn't, it may not lose money, but it has more costs, has more expenses, because it now has to, the public works has to take care of an extra, however, million dollar project it is.
Right, that you have infrastructure, gutter sewer, water, it's all part of it. And I was recently at one of the meetings for the alcohol license renewal. And it was brought up that, well, should someone who's behind on property taxes, should we renew a liquor license? Because traditionally, those locations require city services like police. Well, this is no different.
Yeah, yeah. Interesting things. So just to kind of go back to the question that kind of asked originally, when should TIFs be used? What was kind of the principles that you that you worked through or that you will work through?
Okay, I I would have a hard time ever voting for a TIF that was new construction on on new land, put it that way.
Right.
If it's blighted property, if there's a if if the city's not getting much tax revenue or very little, or it's going back on taxes, maybe those kind of buildings instead. And if it serves the community, if it serves individuals and their business interests, yeah, I have a hard time with that.
Okay. So with property taxes, it's interesting because it seems like a lot of mine has been in an uproar about it. And you mentioned that you the new budget hearings are going down, and it's like a continual process that goes on there. We just feels like got done figuring out our last budget and getting that all approved. Last budget, we saw minimal increase in the mills. But yet assessments still increase. So so in theory, if there's no increase in mills, taxes still go up.
Right.
How are you gonna be on this? Is this something where you are for taxes, the mills decreasing every year? Or?
It would be nice if we could match the amount, if we could cap an amount, say, okay, you know, whether the mills go up or the evaluation goes up. It would be nice to say, no more increase, whatever that is.
Right.
Now, however, city staff is gonna be, you can't, you can't ask them to falsify the assessment. That's not, that's not fair.
Definitely not. That, I mean, that's terrible for the market.
Right. But if we could somehow freeze what that value is, that would be nice.
Yeah. Should we just get rid of the mills?
It is confusing.
People can understand it?
Yeah, Google can help people out there. Basically, a percentage of value of a thousand dollars on a house, it gets confusing. But the other part is remember that, yeah, the city is the assessor, but that's about what 32% of your tax bill. You've got the park district, you've got the county, you've got the school in there. And those are different elected bodies. Like, you can't step on each other's toes. That's that's a separate election.
That part's missed. That parts miss a lot.
A lot of people forget that.
People get excited about the new school or the new development.
Well, snow removal comes into play. If you remember years ago, it was all about, well, why can't the park district clear roads? They can't because they can't tax and assess people. They can only do so for their own property.
Right. Interesting stuff with taxes. So moving on, let's talk about the idea of city council does not listen. That's something that was brought up. And I think has been brought up by many. This is something that you're getting from kind of the people that you had to have sign on.
Well, I would knock on doors. I used to think it was apathy. I I think it's frustration and anger now. I've been telling people for years to pay attention to city council stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I can agree and disagree. They don't always listen to me. And that's kind of why I got into this. I'll be blunt. They rewrote the guidelines for the magic fund. I was not happy at all with what they did. I pointed out that they were violating their own guidelines. Two board directors for the Chamber EDC were receiving funds or loans, if you will. And I thought that was wrong. So I pointed it out. And lo and behold, they rewrote the guidelines now to say that a city council member can receive funds, as well as a board member on the Chamber EDC. In my version of conflict of interest is different than theirs, I guess. No, they voted seven zero to approve those guidelines. I would have voted against that.
Should it be that the city council members just has to abstain?
Well, they do have to abstain in the vote. They have to declare in writing their interest, and then they have to abstain. But keep in mind, that doesn't mean they can't trade a vote. Like, my conflict of interest definition is way different. I would say no. Like, I, my conflict of interest definition is way different, I, I would say no, that's not right.
Okay, yeah, so going back to, what, what were some of the thoughts of the council not listening? Is it, is it, uh, obviously you bring up that and the personal feeling, but from the people that are, that you're knocking on doors with. Um, just not listening budget, seems like that's something that comes up a lot, is it in public infrastructure? Uh, other areas as well, where's that feedback coming from and what can city council do to fix it?
Well, keep in mind, they just did the satisfaction survey, right?
Yeah.
And they talk about the condition of streets, roads, that kind of stuff.
Everyone likes to complain about a good pothole.
And there are some doozies out there. But here's where it gets interesting, because we talked about the TIFs of the tracks, we talk about how valuable that infill is and not to grow your, you know, we're over twelve hundred road miles, I think, or lane miles, they call it. We're not taking care of what we have.
Right.
And yet the city is growing at, at a rate that we're incentivizing the tracks, for instance, now, keep in mind, that's not all bad out there, there's gonna be some tax revenue brought in. But the hospital doesn't pay taxes, they're a hospital.
Right.
Okay, so now you got the incentives at the tracks. Now, keep in mind, the seven buildings surrounding the community space will. But this is what scares me, phase one for the tracks has already been passed. Phase two involves what? A parking garage.
That's your, that, that's gotta be my favorite thing, we love parking garages.
Why in the world are we incentivizing a parking garage? And it works the same way as the community, the plaza space. That parking garage will be attached essentially to the hotel, at least the plans that I've seen. And that's a ten million dollar TIF, I believe. How can we deny the city of Minot, the general fund, that tax revenue to incentivize a parking garage that will essentially service the hotel?
Yeah.
I don't think that's fair.
Right, right. So what can city council do to listen better, to show that they're listening to the people? And, and I, I think specifically, what are you going to do? I think that's an important question. Uh, because it does sometimes feel like uh, there needs to be higher engagement at city council meetings, agreed, but it seems like maybe it's a little bit hard to get in touch with elected officials sometimes.
Or do they not vote the way people want them to? That I think is the big question. Whoever is elected, I think we're gonna see some new faces.
We, we have to see a new face, at least one.
Yeah, at, at least one. You can only ask them to do so much.
Okay.
Now, the thing is, is who's ever elected is gonna act however they want, if they don't wanna engage or don't wanna discuss things with someone, that's, that's them, I guess.
How are you gonna go about it?
I will try my best to respond and carry on a conversation, I don't have a problem with confrontation, I think if people have seen me at a city council meeting, they understand that.
I think would be great.
What's that?
Do I think would be great?
What?
I think more elected officials should be doing this, or they should be taken to social media, not to blast, not to cast down, but to show the logic into why they made their decisions.
Yes, I, because that goes back to the agendas that are set up. They read all the information and then look at, look at consent agenda, they will pass twenty things with one vote, and people don't know why.
Yeah.
So they don't know the steps that are taken to why they voted the way they did.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, no, I, I think that's something that really should be considered by more uh city officials to, or elected officials, not city officials, elected officials, to show what their voting process was on certain ish, issues, and it would help with that uh listening. That people sometimes don't feel like their voice is heard.
Cause is it, is it not listening or is it misunderstanding?
Okay, and, and what do you mean by that?
Well, I would say elected officials have a reason they voted the way they did.
Uh, they should.
Yeah, hopefully they have a reason. But i- it's getting missed.
Yeah.
And then people throw their hands up, they get frustrated, and they don't ask anymore questions. Remember cognitive bias plays a big part in all this, people believe what they wanna believe.
Right, right. Yeah, it'll be an interesting thing, it's definitely something that probably should be on uh some people's minds. Um, so let's talk about economic growth in the area, okay? How much focus does Minot need to have on that?
Keep in mind, the ballot initiative that ended up being the magic fund. That was a will of the people, but have we incentivized ourselves into a problem?
Probably.
Right now, and we've kind of redefined what economic development is, it was all about creating jobs. Well, now some of that money is used as the facade grants. Which in theory, I don't really have a problem with, I have a problem with how they're administered. Okay, so now we're essentially incentivizing bars and restaurants.
Okay.
In certain areas, now is that fair to all of them in town? Well, no, but also, I don't know of a bar or a restaurant that isn't sure to help right now. So is that really what we need to concentrate on?
Right. Um, so the facade program, programming, not sure about how it's always administered, um, tell us more there, there, there's some, there's some meat on the bone right there, yeah, you, you said that.
You know, back to the big M building.
Okay.
Not only did they get a TIF, they got a double facade grant.
Nice.
Okay, now here's the thing, the facade grant is supposed to be a first come, first served program. If you go back and read the meeting minutes, there's actually discussion about them saying, should we even be discussing this because they haven't applied for the program yet? To me, that's a problem. Then October rolls around that year and all of a sudden, I think it was an amendment to the budget was made or it was approved, five hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in the facade grant program.
Nice, good for them.
But is it really first come, first served when it's already discussed?
Right.
Them getting it.
Yeah, first come, first served, and then there's, is, is that all the administration part? I'm trying to pull up something that I think I have here, I might not have it on this phone. Um, is, is that all that you have on the administration part, or there's, is there more that kind of bugs with it, how it's administered?
There are what I would consider some conflicts of interest.
All right.
Now, keep in mind, you apply through the Renaissance Zone Approval Board, that's, that's who I'm talking about. Now, their meeting minutes were not very current, they're up to speed, I, I, I was a squeaky wheel that got the grease there, I think they, they've got them all up now. But it, it gets questionable, it really, really does.
And I, and I know there was a city council member that had family members that received some of it, do you think that's fair?
That's an interesting one, I, I had a discussion with him, and he claims he has no financial interest in the building whatsoever, it, it's listed. Uh, I understand his father passed away, I'm sorry to hear that, but it's listed as the ownership is his mother, I believe. That's getting questionable. Um, you know, it, cause once again, I made some records requests, and there was no correspondence between city officials and his mother, it was all through him.
Oh, there you go, that, that's an interesting one. So how should it be done? We, we like to point out problems, uh, just as in general as people, we like to point out problems, but how can it be better fixed?
The facade grant program, uh, first of all, it's in the Renaissance Zone, and the way the magic fund economic development rules read is if it's in the Renaissance Zone, the same person can benefit over and over and over again. I wanna see that go away, I think once is enough. Now, that's just my personal opinion, people might not agree with me.
Should the city council set up an independent board um to approve or deny those, or at, at least make recommendations?
Well, the Renaissance Zone Board makes the, the, the application process, then they make the recommendation to city council. So I think really the question is people need to vote for people who will vote their conscience and not.
Yeah. That's an interesting one for sure. Um, so economic growth, also a huge problem that we've seen in Minot is childcare. Okay, and it kind of fights for, is there, is there a solution that the city can do to help with this problem?
Oh, boy, that's a tough one, keep in mind, I don't have kids of my own, but uh, well, even coming here for your interview today. Who's in the building?
There was a kid.
Yeah, that, that's great, I, I, but maybe not always the option you're looking for, right? I, I don't know, I'm assuming you're his parent.
Yeah.
Um, so that's an issue, we talk about workforce development. And part of going to work is having someplace you can, someplace you trust dropping your kids off at, to be taken care of. And that's a whole, that's a whole nother world today, that, that can be, that can be questionable. So how does the city incentivize that is the question?
Right.
And I don't have all the answers.
You don't have all the answers.
Mr. Burlingame is working pretty hard on that. I, I don't know.
Let, let me ask you this then, what services should this city provide? Like, like, what's your view of what the city's supposed to be? Sometimes it gets a little bit distorted, well, there should be economic growth, and they should be this, and they should be that, and, and sometimes it's like, well, no, it's to provide for the citizens.
I wanna see basic services.
Yeah.
Okay. Water, sewer.
Yeah, infrastructure.
Fire, police. You know, the roads, that, that's the stuff I wanna see, that's the bread and butter, if we're paying the property taxes that we are, which are a premium, I get it. That needs to be taken care of first, I, that's why I have the idea, let the growth be what the growth is, I don't think we need to.
Is that your slogan?
No, no, no. Um, I don't think we need to pick winners and losers, I, I don't think that's government's role.
Right, right, so, so for a city like, for a, uh, issue like childcare, is that something that the city should be getting involved in?
Well, keep in mind, it's Chamber EDC, who I believe has the contract for economic development, right? Maybe they need to take on that, and I think they have to some degree, maybe they need to take on that role of childcare development.
Right.
I don't really know that that's the city's role.
Absolutely, another thing that kind of goes into this affects the home of, of many people in Minot, and that's the house prices that are on the rise. Is there something that the city of Minot should be doing that helps affect that? Other than giving TIFs to new residential developments?
Well, I
Like, like, is there truly a shortage?
With, with uh, the TIF for housing, I thought, I don't know any houses, but uh, apartments and so forth, that, that is part of it.
Yep.
Yeah, I, with the exception of blighted buildings, I don't think the city should be doing that.
But is, is the residential, lack of residential housing a problem in Minot, and should the city be involved in it?
The only way I think it should work is because there's no profit really to be had, is low income situations.
Okay.
Okay, if you look at the TIFs now that we've been giving out, or the incentives, if you wanna call them that, it's higher end housing. And I get it, that's where the profits to be made for the developer is. And keep in mind, I, I won't mention their name, but how they're structured, they're essentially asking for a tax break from the city and then turning around and then asking for investors and then paying them.
Nice. Get what you can get.
Well, that's, that's not how I roll, I guess, I, I don't think that's the city's role.
So you're not gonna become one of those politicians that go into office, the ordinary Joe and come out rich?
No, I hope not to, but uh, one of the questions you always ask people, and I'm gonna jump ahead, and maybe it's not something you planned on asking me, but I'm gonna tell you. My favorite book is probably Animal Farm.
Okay.
And I highly suggest if somebody hasn't read it, to read it. Or go on YouTube and watch the movies, there's a couple of different versions out there.
So you, you've seen our rapid fire rounds?
Yes, I have, it's been a while since I watched, but uh, yeah, I have.
All right, let's go for one, I wasn't gonna do it on the, on the, the city council ones, but, but we'll go for it.
Okay.
You ready for it?
Yeah, I might not be too quick.
I might have some trick ones in it, handwritten letter or email?
Oh, email, my handwriting is horrible.
How do you like to receive them? Would you prefer a handwritten letter or an email?
I haven't received a handwritten letter in a long time, so I gotta go, well, email, but.
Art museum or history museum?
Uh, history.
Win the lottery or find your perfect job?
I gotta go with win the lottery.
Twitter, now X, or LinkedIn?
I don't use.
All right.
Maybe Twitter, I guess, if I had to.
So, all right, all right, that's fine, pasta or pizza?
Oh, I'm a pasta guy.
Podcasts or audiobooks?
I'm a fan of both.
Come on, there's only one right answer to this one.
I gotta go podcast.
All right, thank you, we appreciate it. Uh, classical music or, or country?
Oh, country, yeah, I, I, I can't stomach classical.
Sunrise or sunset?
I gotta say sunset.
The person, the historical figure that you would love to have dinner with, and it can't be Jesus.
Oh, boy, Herb Brooks.
All right, tell us who he is.
That one hockey coach, you gotta know Herb Brooks.
No, I don't. I don't follow, uh, I don't follow hockey close enough.
He was the Olympic coach in nineteen eighty.
Ah, there you go, the miracle, nice. Very good, very good, um, are you a plane guy or a train guy?
Uh, plane.
Okay, okay.
Even though I hate flying, I'll say that, but it's more efficient.
Tom Ross or Sean Sittma, I'm kidding, that was a trick one, we're not doing it. Did I almost have you?
No.
He wasn't gonna comment on it, he never, it never had a chance. All right, well, it's been interesting, we've talked a lot about the like ins and outs of the city, okay? And, and I've, we've intentionally, if you're a viewer, if you're watching this, we've, I've intentionally tried to make this really relaxed, where it's just very conversational, so hopefully we've enjoyed this style. But you get elected on election day, you get elected, it's a big day for you. What are kind of your three priorities that you, that you're gonna have right out of the gate?
First of all, ask the questions that need to be asked, I, I think out of the gate, people get elected, they, they wanna appease too many people. And you just gotta remain who you are, and, and ask the tough questions. I'm not going in, I'm not gonna represent one special interest or this group of people or what have you. It's just the voters that wanna put me there, that it's them I will represent, as well as the ones that don't. So tha- that, and the communication, I, I actually like your idea on the social media end of it, so that might have to be part of it.
Yeah.
Um, third, and this will happen before the election, but digging into that budget, like where can we save some money, cause people are hurting.
Right.
It's tough out there.
So what are three principles that make up who Le Snyder is?
First and foremost, I'm not afraid of my opinion. Voice it, people have it, it doesn't mean you have to hate somebody, I might agree or disagree with you on something.
Yeah.
Okay, it doesn't mean we can't have a civil conversation, where you can still discuss things and then come to the best outcome possible. You said three things, oh, boy, it's hard to talk about yourself, but uh, I've been through some struggles. That's one thing I credit hockey to was being able to overcome, the prognosis for me was not to be sitting here and being able to see you. I can't see you well.
Right.
But I was told, Leif, you need to enroll for the school for the blind like right now.
Wow.
So I made it through, um, I can still see well enough to, to function, that, that's a good thing. But learning to overcome obstacles is what I've, I've always gotten out of the sporting world, if you will. The third thing is, uh, is helping someone else before I help myself.
Okay, very good. If you do get elected, what's gonna be like your, you, you talked about like three, three drivers, but what can people know, how can people trust you? What it comes down to, like what, what are gonna be the factors that sounds like I know I can trust like because of this? We're getting personal and deep right now, okay?
That's an interesting one, I, I just have to go back to who I've always been.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, that's an interesting one, cause like even my friends in some ways kind of fear me because I'll call them out on stuff.
Yeah.
I I don't, I might not have a lot of friends because of that. But that's who I am, uh, when I served on board, like the hockey boosters. Yeah, I was the first one to stand up and and represent maybe the unpopular opinion sometimes. Goofy part there is I had to roll out the safe sport program with the my hockey boosters.
Nice.
Uh, now other sports have taken that on, but it came out of the the Penn State Fiasco.
Okay.
I wasn't the most popular person out of the Mesa Rink.
I'm sure.
Uh, just dealing with parents and all the rules that had to be in play, but the gist of it is, it actually worked.
Yeah.
Protected the members of the program and especially the kids, that's the important thing. And if you have to, it it makes you ugly sometimes, you just have to do it, cause in the long run, that's what you wanna do.
Really appreciate you coming on the podcast today.
Hmm, glad to be here.
Absolutely, uh, if somebody wants to either contact you or learn more about your campaign, is there an easy way for them to do that?
Yeah, I was gonna do the website stuff, this race is a sprint, it's not, so I know you're into the web marketing and stuff, but.
We got you.
The Facebook page up and running.
I'll run up for you next week if you need it.
Um, but it it literally is a s- a sprint.
Yeah, so just go, just uh search Leif on on Facebook, you said?
Yep.
Uh, that's L E I F Snyder?
Yes, S N Y D E R.
There you go, well, again, thank you for coming on and wish you best of luck come June.
Thank you.
Thank you for watching this episode of Minot Matters, where we're just all things Minot, it's a great time here. Uh, be sure to follow us on, follow the Decodin on Facebook, like and subscribe on YouTube, become part of the Decodin community, we're here for you. Uh, thank you for watching this video and we'll see you next time.